I'd like to welcome everyone. We're going to call this meeting, regularly scheduled meeting of Greer City Council, to order November 11th, 2025, which by the way, Veterans Day. I'd like to send out our most sincere thank you to all the veterans, of which we have many on our staff. And of course, this is a kind of a hotbed of veterans in the upstate and in this state. And had it not been for Kings Mountain and Cowpens, we might be speaking British right now. That's kind of where it all started going downhill. To start this meeting, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Judy Albert if she would do our pledge of allegiance and invocation for council. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for each and every day that we are able to get up and move and do your will. We pray that you'll be with us through this meeting. And with it being Veterans Day, dear Lord, I just pray that you will bless each and ever veteran that has served and that's also the ones that are serving now to protect our country. And I pray, dear Lord, that this nation will always remain one nation under God. Be with us at this meeting this evening, and I pray that you'll be with us all as we leave to go home. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Judy. Now, I'd like to call to your attention a public hearing. This is for the Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update and Future Land Use Map. The ordinance is number 29-2025, which we will cover more in depth later. But for the public hearing, the ordinance of the City of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update, consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of 1994. In anticipation of us voting on that, do we have anyone here, I'll ask one time, that would like to address our current five-year plan or any questions about it? I will ask a second time if we have anyone wishing to address council. And a third time if we have anyone wanting to speak on the comprehensive plan. If not, we'll call that public hearing to a close, and we'll proceed with our regular scheduled meeting. First off is the minutes of the council meeting of October the 28th. I will entertain a motion and a second for those.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or corrections for Ms. Duncan? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas, excuse me, Mr. Bettis?
Yes. That takes us to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Bettis, council, thank you very much. Just a few quick reminders, it is holiday season again, so if you haven't seen our public services team out decorating the poles, both downtown and up point set, they are decking the halls over the next few days, so it's a very exciting time. With that, I would like to point you to something that we're doing that's a little bit new this year. We are hosting a sensory Santa. This is a sensory-friendly event designed for children of all ages and abilities to enjoy a quiet, relaxed holiday experience. They receive private 15-minute visit with Santa. Families and service animals are welcome. Cost is $20 per time slot for non-residents and $15 for City of Greer residents. See our Facebook page for more information or call events to purchase tickets. Along that, the Holiday Arts Fair will be the City of Greer Center for the Arts on Saturday, November 22nd. This is going to be an indoor market experience featuring wildlife ambassadors from local rescues, with an opportunity to support community programs through the Empty Bowls Project, which raises funds for local after-school and summer programs. And finally, the Farmer's Market will be this Friday, November 14th, from 4:30 to 8:00. Good food, live music, vendors, and a chili cook-off, so please make sure you attend the Farmer's Market. Mr. Bettis, council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Duncan, did we have anyone for public forum?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Hospitality Industry Representative Bill Tyler's term will expire at the end of the year, and General Public Representative Candace Good's term will expire end of the year. Do we have any word on those?
Yes, sir. They're up for recommendation for reappointment if it's council's desire.
Both?
Yes.
Okay. Can I do those in one motion?
Probably separate.
Two, please.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion on Mr. Tyler.
So moved.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on that regarding? No?
I'm just going to give a shameless plug. Bill Tyler has been a great friend over the years, actually was his employee for some time, and just glad to continue to see him serve in this capacity.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. We'll entertain a motion for Candace Good's term.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments for Ms. Good? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. The Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Greg Kruusko, PE's term will expire 12/31/25.
He would also like to continue to serve if it's council's desire.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion for Mr. Kruusko.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on that one? No? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. That takes us to old business. First off, second and final reading of ordinance number 23-2025, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Bennett Center Ventures LLC, located at 300 Bennett Center Drive, from office professional to medium density. Ms. Cotty?
Hi, thank you. I don't have any updates, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for any questions about this one?
Refresh my memory, the intended use?
Single-family residential.
And so that's, I am assuming that all of that land, although it was going to be developed as office space or offices, was there some sort of, like a HOA, but for the, who signed off that, hey, this is okay?
Yeah, there were deed restrictions recorded on all but two properties, and this is one of them. So they are not restricted to office park only.
When you say single-family residential, is it going to be like a multi-unit?
Uncertain. They haven't submitted a site plan. I've seen a couple different iterations of what they may do. They would like to do single-family detached with small setbacks on the side, but we don't have a site plan under review at this point.
Is this the same one, the architect came?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he's the one who said that it's going to be townhouses. I believe that's what he's talking about.
That's what I thought he said last time.
It may be their latest.
Yeah, because we asked about how the finishes were to be on the outside, and he thought it would be brick or something like that.
So you don't think there's any material restrictions, I know, at least for that area?
They're not in this area. They're not located in the downtown overlay or the entryway overlay.
Oh, I was saying deed restrictions, you know.
Oh, no, no, sir.
Any questions? Comments? Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Old Business Two, second and final reading of ordinance number 24-2025, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain piece of property owned by Dennis Kiff and Emily Kiff, located at 205 West Arlington Avenue, from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. I don't have any updates on this one either, but happy to answer any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
And this was just going to be a single-family home, I mean, one?
Yes, there is an existing single-family home. They are looking to build an accessory structure, a garage, and they would like it to be five feet instead of 10 feet.
Yes, right.
Any other questions? Not? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. That takes us to new business. First reading of ordinance number 25-2025, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the City of Greer to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Mr. Klein?
Thank you. Good evening, council. Act 176, the Business License Standardization Act establishes a standard class schedule, whereas businesses are placed into classes using the latest edition of the North American Industry Classification System Code. Class schedule must be updated every two years and approved by ordinance, which is why I'm here in front of you all now tonight, giving you a quick update on the changes that'll be made. We have six changes that will be made. NAICS Code 21 Mining, we will be going from a Class 2 to a Class 3. NAICS Code 48-49 Transportation and Warehousing will be going from a Class 1 to a Class 2. Those two are both increases. NAICS Code 53 Real Estate and Rental and Leasing will be going from a Class 7 down to a Class 6. NAICS Code 54 Professional Scientific and Technical Services will be going from a Class 5 down to a Class 4. NAICS Code 62 Healthcare and Social Assistance will be going down from a Class 4 to a Class 3. And finally, NAICS Code 81 Other Services will be going from a Class 4 down to a Class 3. With that, be happy to stand for any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for questions. I'll do the first. We don't have a lot of mining in Greer, do we?
Correct. We have no businesses under mining. Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming when it lowers the class, that will lower the cost?
Of the business license? Correct. Yes, sir.
Very good.
Correct.
Now, the classification, the one through, what, nine, I believe it is?
Correct. Class one through nine.
That is staff's recommendation, or is that?
It's set by, it's set by the MAS C, and the rates are actually set by you all as council, but the actual classifications are set and proposed by the MAS C.
And all of this was done?
Back in 2021 due to the Act 176.
As a result of the state legislature, right? Because they, somebody wanted to this?
Correct. There was some app.
This is part of the Business License Standardization Act of 2020. Y'all passed it in 2021, and then it was required to be passed by all councils, levying a business license by the end of 2021.
Make it uniform throughout the state.
And it was required by the state?
Yes, sir. Yes, this is a state requirement, and this is just for, this action today, y'all's action and consideration today of the NAICS codes change is in keeping with the requirements of 176.
And they all did increase one or decrease one, so no substantial change.
Now, we still are putting our resident contractors at a disadvantage when they are competing with a contractor outside the city for a job inside the city, correct? Because they have to pay their business license based on 100% of their sales, whether it's in California, New Mexico, and then the City of Greer.
If they are able to prove they paid a business license fee in another municipality, it can, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
It would be what they would be able to deduct, correct?
Yeah, I would like to see some kind of relief to make our resident contractors competitive. And it's not anything, from what I remember, all of this came out from this act, I believe, and it wasn't anything that we did. It was a standard, part of the state.
Somebody wanted to get rid of them. Somebody wanted to?
Right, but what I'm saying, as far as our contract, I don't think we should have anybody in our city competing for business inside our city to be at an economic disadvantage to someone that's in the county, adjoining county or somewhere else.
Is there some way we can do that and be still, be under the law?
If I'm not mistaken, and this has been four years now since y'all passed it, I do believe that we took Mr. Erwood's concerns at the time and, over a two-year period, adjusted the code, adjusted the rate to where it would even out over that second or third year. If I'm, is it some, and I'm looking at Heather, Heather, come on up here if you would, please. Mr. Bost, if you don't mind, Heather's our business license manager.
If I remember correctly, they were given one additional year to begin to collect that money from their customer.
That's right.
Claim on their next year's business license.
That's right. Yes, sir. So to your point, Mr. Erwood, yeah, we, council did take action directing staff to make that adjustment when we passed the Business License Standardization Act as a council. I hear your concern that it may be deeper than that adjustment made back in 2021.
We probably need to put that for, as for some discussion at some point, because we need to be giving city businesses the, at least a fair level playing field, if not, if not giving them a little leg up on competition businesses outside our city.
Sure. Good policy discussion.
Any other questions, comments?
I will say, I agree with Jay. I mean, just practically, if I'm a contractor doing a project in the city and I have a city business license, well, I have to pass that cost off to the customer while contractor B out of lineman or some other area, they don't have that additional cost to do it in the city limits. So I think it's worth us discussing, for sure.
Yeah. Would that not hold true for other businesses, too?
Well, if you look at the, look at, I think they're like 8.1 compared to three and four, when, if you look at the class, they're ranked pretty high. Construction is. Industrial, I think, is like a nine and?
What I'm saying is?
8.1.
It doesn't the same apply if you hire any service from out of town? Wouldn't the same principle apply?
They pay their business license fee based on the project that they are going to do in the city.
Right.
Whereas a contractor, a resident contractor who has an office and presence here in our city, they have to pay their business license based on 100% of their sales, no matter where it is.
Is the same not true of other businesses?
Well, if you have a business that, let's say, a hardware business, they may have other locations, but they're, if they're going to pay based on that, their sales in that location.
Right.
They're not having to, if they have a store here, and let's say they have a store in another state, those sales aren't combined for them to buy a business license. It's the sales they're doing at that location.
If you, this is a kind of a morbid example, but if you contract with a mortuary outside of the City of Greer, but their services are done in the City of Greer, is that not the same as using a wood mortuary as opposed to them?
The wood mortuary would, all right, let's be careful not to get out of the construction in, because?
That's what I asked my question, is it just construction that that applies?
This is just for construction, is how, that instead of paying your dollars for business license for one or two jobs that you've done in the city, then now you're having to go take into account everything you're doing outside the city. You're not, you're not doing any?
Because their business address is a City of Greer business address.
Right, right.
And the only relief you have is, like, let's say I work in the City of Greenville, I can deduct some of that cost. Like he was saying, you get a rebate on it, but if I'm working out in the county and some other areas, if they don't have a business license fee, you're not deducting it. So you're paying 100%.
Well, I guess my question is, how do you adjust it and still stay within the law?
The only way I know that you adjust it is you have, you have to change the actual rate that we charge per thousand?
Yes, sir. So just to kind of try and bring this back in a little bit, Mr. Erwood's point is well made, and I do think it's a larger policy discussion that we need to discuss, specific to that industry, and making any necessary adjustments that could be made under the law. In this particular case, this action tonight won't consider any change at all. This is just adopting those NAICS codes. So we're discussing two very important things, one of which can't be addressed tonight as opposed to this action. So to answer that question, we can certainly work on just some cursory information for y'all between first and second reading, just so you have, but I do think it's a longer discussion that needs to be had as we go into the new fiscal year.
Well, I'm in favor of cutting the people in the city some slack, as long as it comes within this act that we're?
Right. And I agree, because we have always said we are a business-friendly city. And if we want to, you know, continue under that umbrella, then I think that's one thing that needs to be addressed.
Got you. I agree. Any other comments? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
New business, Article 2, first reading of ordinance number 26-2025, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by CS Property LLC, located at 1455 West Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said properties. She's back.
Thank you, Mr. Bettis and council. So this is an annexation request. It does, it is two parcels located on West Wade Hampton Boulevard, surrounded somewhat by city properties, one of our mini donut holes. Currently, it's unzoned Greenville County. They are requesting to annex and zone to commercial corridor. The intended use is an auto repair facility. This is an aerial map, again, kind of showing the proximity. This is the current zoning map. The pink property that you see is all corridor commercial. The light green is rural residential. And then finally, our future land use map, this area, not this particular piece, since it's not in the city, but the adjacent future land use is identified as suburban and commercial. Here are the existing conditions on the site. And then again, the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. Surrounding uses are primarily commercial on that Wade Hampton corridor. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission will have a public hearing next Monday evening. Happy to answer any questions.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? By the way, I used to live right across the highway from there.
Well, I'm trying, I thought that's where it was. Can you bring up the last, not, yes, that slide there?
That's where they had the metal buildings.
There were a lot of buildings, yes. There were like sheds all over, yes. You're not remembering incorrectly. It's just been cleaned up.
And to the left of it, left of this site, that's where the, is a pool supply?
Yeah, there's a little.
I believe so, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe the applicant is here if you have questions.
Okay.
In situations where we, you mentioned that it was going to be auto.
Mm-hmm.
Are they required to tell us that information ahead of time, or?
They are not.
Okay.
They're only required to request a zoning, and then anything within that zoning that would be allowed by right would be kind of open-ended.
Will the applicant or the representative of the applicant, please raise your hand? You available for questions? If so, be it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, I will ask, since they said it, are we looking at a five-minute oil change or are we looking at an auto there?
It's an auto repair.
Would this be like a?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you mention the name?
That's a great question. Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's comprehensive. I want to go into a long, get myself in trouble.
Okay, okay.
Goodness.
We can check with the applicant and let you know at second reading.
Yeah, understand.
I don't know that information, or I would.
Personally, I like the secrecy a little more better, so then, you know, now everybody on social media is going to say, you know, we're getting this, getting that. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Article 3, first reading of ordinance number 27-2025, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by AGWG 3085 Holdings LLC, located at 3019 South Highway 14, 3021 South Highway 14, and 3035 South Highway 14 by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said properties. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. Again, this is another annexation request. This particular request is for two parcels. The ordinance 28 that will be immediately after this is also part of this overall project, but it has a different ownership, so there are going to be two ordinance numbers, but again, kind of a related project. So just wanted to let you know upfront, the three parcels together are about 14 and a half acres. So again, they are asking to annex into the City of Greer. This is located on Highway 14 near the Pelham Batesville intersection, and they are asking for commercial corridor zoning. This is an aerial map of the property. Again, it's across the street from the fire station. This is a zoning map. Again, there's not a lot of our City of Greer property along this corridor. The closest is Watawash and then the Pelham Crossing corridor with the DRD flex buildings and bank and future gas station. This is adjacent, it backs up to River Reserve, which is a DRD project. This is the future land use map. Again, it backs up to suburban neighborhood. The properties along Highway 14 that are in the city are suburban and commercial. Currently, these are residential properties with single-family residences. And then again, their cost is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. It is surrounded by a variety of residential and commercial uses. Across the street from an institutional use is a fire station. The comprehensive plan, excuse me, is not suburban and commercial. It is mixed employment. Staff does recommend approval. Planning Commission will have a public hearing, but they have not yet. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We'll entertain a motion and a second to open the floor.
So moved.
Second.
And the floor is open? That does conform with the comprehensive plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cotty, if I may put them on the spot, I would love for council to hear the concept that is at least planned tentatively for this because I'm pretty excited about the idea of what, you know, of what's at hand.
I wasn't sure what all I was at liberty to share, but I'd love to have the applicant. I defer to them.
Is the applicant or a representative present? Would you please come to the podium, please? State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you for having me. My name's Ben Bauer. I'm at one oh two High Plains Road in Simpsonville. So our planned use for this property and the adjoining is a car club. So our goal is to build a car storage and clubhouse facility where we'll store classic and high-end cars in a kind of museum-style layout, both in a in a larger open storage area in a big building as well as in private garages. And so our goal is to bring together like-minded car enthusiasts and give them a place to store their car and to meet other people with similar passion. And that's our hope for the project, so.
Is this project going to be, I guess, open to the public or just members of the club?
So we plan to do, it'll be a members-only club, but we plan to do lots of public events as well as, I was talking with Councilman Hopper about doing some city events that we love to host and we love to host all kinds of, any car enthusiast is welcome to come and we we're passionate about trying to involve everybody in the community in it and we love to do that any way we can.
More than just a big garage, but it needs space for, you know,
Yeah.
centered around cars and car lovers.
Exactly, yes.
Any particular type of automobile?
No, we really, it's anyone who has a passion for cars, whether it's classics or sports cars or anything. That's our, that's our goal, so.
Mr. Bauer or Ms. Cotty, can you speak to the buffering along the backside of the property that's just natural as well as what would be required, you know, between the residential and anything that's done on this on the site?
You can come up to either.
Sure, yeah, there's there's plenty, we plan to keep a large amount of green space even there's a on the backside and there's a lot of land between the residential and then all the way up. I doubt they'll really see us that much or definitely won't hear us. So we're we're definitely going to be up on the road is the plan, so we should have a good buffer.
Thank you. So again, we haven't done a site development plan yet, but just with the zoning of commercial corridor versus a DRD, we look at the closest zoning district, which in this case would be suburban neighborhood. And so they would be required to do either a type-three or type-four buffer, which it requires a wall and planted area. And there's also, I believe, some flood plain that they'll be working with in the back that they will not be developing. We do also require a 10% tree save area. So again, they'll most likely be leaving that area in the back undisturbed, but we won't know that till we have a site site plan. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah. I know we had generally discussed that, but just for the sake of our discussion tonight, to point that out.
Thank you.
I think that's, that was really the only thing, and you guys did a good job of addressing that even before. I'm personally excited what you guys are considering and trying to bring to, you know, be a part of the city of Greer. I think it's a good fit for the area and a lot less intensive a use, it feels like to me, than a lot of potential, you know, establishments that could have come to that to that spot in or in or out of the city, for that matter.
Thank you. Here, we're excited and hope to, hope you approve our request.
Seems pretty low impact. That's a good thing. Any other questions or comments? If not, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes, excuse me.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes. Moving to item four, first reading of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance to provide the annexation of a certain property owned by Highway fourteen Cars LLC located at thirty eighty-five South Highway fourteen by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said property.
Thank you. So this is the third parcel that's part of the same project that we just discussed. It is just under a different ownership. So the intent is to, once they are properly zoned, to combine the three properties once the sale goes through. So again, this is one parcel that'll be combined with the adjacent parcels near the Pelham Batesville intersection along Highway fourteen, just south of the fire station. This is the zoning map. Again, it does back up to DRD, which is the Pelham River Reserve at Pelham Development, which is single-family detached. It is down the street from the Watawash and Pelham Crossing Development. This is a future land use. It backs up to suburban neighborhood, but most of the Highway fourteen corridor fronting properties are designated as mixed employment. And then this is the current street view existing conditions. It's again, a single-family residential use. They are asking to annex and zone to commercial corridor. Again, they're surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial and institutional. The comprehensive plan is mixed employment and this is compatible request. Staff does recommend approval and Planning Commission will hold a public hearing next week.
We'll entertain a motion to open the floor. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, and floor is open. Is the owner or a representative of the owner with us same? Okay, you have anything to add to this? Okay. Counsel?
This total area, fourteen acres, including this one, or was that just the other two?
Yes, sir. The two, the two are seven point four nine and then this parcel by itself is six. It's about a total of fourteen and a half.
Of all three?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So it is these two.
I will agree with you, Mark, because I, this property's been for sale for some time and I was apprehensive. I was like, man, if they're going to try to fit homes in there, that's going to be a tough site. So I was glad to see a a creative solution.
Any other questions or comments? Good. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Article five, first reading of ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance of the city of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of nineteen ninety-four. This is what we had the public hearing for earlier this evening. Ms. Cotty's going to explain the entire thing.
I will summarize it and you guys feel free to stop me with questions along the way. So this is a five-year update to the comprehensive plan. We adopted Transforming Greer twenty thirty, which again, is kind of a ten-year look at our future. It is a strategic document that talks about the community's vision for how we grow. It is not a code or ordinance. It is not binding like our UDO. It is a decision-making tool that staff, Planning Commission, council use to make zoning decisions and to help prioritize our investments and our dollars in our budget. So why are we updating it? It's good practice in such a fast-growing area to take a look at it. Ten years is a really long time for a city like Greer that is growing as fast as we are. But the Enabling Act and state law also requires us to take a look at it. So we, most of what this document entails is some updated data and trends, documents, some of our progress towards goals. It does have a few updates to the future land use map. And then it does also have a standalone resilience element. So the, we'll talk a little bit more about this in the last slide with with the resilience element. But the Enabling Act was updated in twenty twenty to require a tenth element. Before that, there were nine required elements for comprehensive plan that you had to touch on. Again, they're ranging from population, natural resources, population, land use, transportation, and kind of how all these things fit together. But back in twenty twenty, in response to a lot of the flooding incidents that we had in back in twenty seventeen, the state updated the Enabling Act to require a resilience element in addition to these other nine. Now, at that time, it was November of twenty twenty. We were already in the midst of public hearing for our Transforming Greer document. So at the recommendation of our city attorney, they did say, you know, I think you can wait to do this element until you're in this one. It is a little bit different than our five-year updates in the past just because we're trying to meet state law and timing wasn't great the first time around. So we'll go over that a little bit more at the end. But again, these are the required elements of the tran- of the comprehensive plan. The last five years, again, I mentioned, it's important for a city like us to take take a mid-decade look and make sure we're on the right track. We have the right goals. We're working towards those goals. These five years were a bit of a doozy. I'm sure you guys all remember twenty twenty. We've had some unprecedented challenges here in the upstate with the coronavirus pandemic, and that was really a global challenge. But certainly, we felt that locally. And then Hurricane Helene really just brought home, again, some of the reasons why we need a resilience element. We also updated our Unified Development Ordinance, which was huge in terms of our regulations and how we look at land use, how we look at housing, how we look at transportation, things like tree save area that go with our natural resources element. It's a, it's a policy document that helps us have teeth to this vision. We also, council last year, adopted impact fees to help growth pay for growth. So that was a huge change for us. We've had quite a bit of organizational structure changes, hiring a tourism specialist. We brought economic development in-house instead of a partnership. We have a new communications and strategic initiatives department. So a lot of changes for the city, both kind of physically and internally. And then lastly, you're all familiar with Four Greer. It's a huge, huge set of projects, huge investment. We're going to talk about it in almost every element, but really our community facilities and priority investment elements, as well as, again, resiliency, our emergency response. Some of the money that we've invested is going to help all of those services. So we're just going to go through every element. Again, I'm not going to read every bullet. I'm happy to if you guys want, just kind of give the highlights. As far as population, we've continued to see really strong growth, both in the region and in the city of Greer. Esri puts our estimate at forty thousand, but in-house puts that much closer to fifty thousand people in the city. One kind of interesting factor was our net migration doubled during COVID, which was the most significant shift in the state of South Carolina during that period. And it wasn't just us, it was a couple of different counties in the upstate. That means more people came in than left. Most of our population characteristics stayed pretty similar, you know, our median age, our racial composition, gender, educational attainment. There weren't significant changes, which you don't really expect to see that in a five-year period either. But some notable, again, include the population increase, our average number of people per household increased slightly, and our median household income increased by quite a bit from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. In terms of economic development, we've kind of seen a couple of different themes. One of the major ones is strengthening our downtown. Council and the community put huge investments into streetscape and we've seen, and the parking garage, as well as the new parking garage that's part of Four Greer. We've seen that payoff with new investment in the community with new multifamily. One recently opened and one currently under construction. The Greer Mill redevelopment. We've seen kind of our investment payoff with private investment. We've also really capitalized on our regional position. We know that our proximity to the inland port and major intersections have a huge advantage for us. And we've seen big, big expansions in both the inland port and the airport. We've seen a lot of new major employers come on board too. And then finally, diversification of our industry. We think that's really important to having a resilient economy as well. We've seen a growing food and beverage manufacturing industry. And now we are seeing a huge health expansion with our Prisma campus. We have two projects currently under review with a major kind of phased development in the works. As far as natural resources, engineering and stormwater staff, with the help of a consultant, completed a pilot watershed study. They've been hard at work over the past couple of years implementing recommendations from that study with support from council, so that's really exciting. We've also adopted new software with Cartograph to help with asset management, which again, will help us get a better feel for what we have and help it get on a better schedule for maintenance so that we're making sure we're proactive instead of reactive. The UDO has also been helpful too in terms of tree protection. We do have stronger tree save requirements. We've continued to forge community partnerships. We've seen recreational trail expansion. We just got the grading permit for the Tiger River Greenway today, so that's exciting. So both Ward's Creek Trail and South Tiger River Greenway. And we, again, have continued stewardship. We were named a National Community Wildlife Habitat, and I do believe that was a two-year study and a big accomplishment. Cultural resources is another element of the plan. We do have very strong cultural programming here and meeting with our PRT team. We've seen kind of our beloved staples like our fairs, our, it's not our farmer's market, but they do use our property. Symphonies, summer camps continue to grow. We've seen increased participation in almost all of our events. We had nearly twenty thousand in attendance at last year's or this year's, I guess, international festival. And then we've instituted several new multi multicultural celebrations. And I personally brought my girls to the Dia de los Muertos event a week or two ago, and it was fantastic. So major kudos to our PRT team, if anyone's here. We've had improvements in public art. And then in historic preservation, we have increased our inventory with Greer Mill becoming both a local historic resource and listed on the National Register. We are very close to the first certificates of occupancy for that. So that's been a long time coming and we're excited to see that redevelopment. Community facilities, again, that's a huge one, council. Thank you. You guys have have put a lot of investment into the community facilities that we have. It seems like a long time ago at this point, but even the kids planted at Century Park. I think that finished and wrapped up in the twenty twenty twenty-one timeframe. That is an award-winning park. So again, major kudos to our PRT team. We've seen new facilities at Turner Park and Stevens Park this year with new basket- basketball courts and a baseball field. We've had expansion in pickleball, again, to meet emerging trends, meeting local demand. We've also introduced and strengthened our rugby program, which is really cool. The Cultural Arts Center saw a major renovation. Again, schools and childcare, they're not necessarily anything city of Greer has done, but in terms of being a community facility, we've seen a lot of expansions and site plans at at schools within our jurisdiction, including new schools, and we've seen several new childcare developments come in over the past couple of years, which is really great for our growing population, especially given the age distribution and amount of kids that we're seeing with all our single-family development. Public services, CBW's undergone some major changes too. They did the Maple Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant expansion and then public safety. Again, we acquired the Pelham Batesville Fire Station on Highway fourteen next to Seteth Farms and then opened new Station Forty-two on South Super Road. And then again, we focused on trails a couple of slides ago. Be remiss not to mention those as well. Housing, Unified Development Ordinance, kind of changed some of our policies to hopefully diversify our housing stock, allowing more and different types of housing types by right in different. types of housing types by right in different zoning districts, including townhomes, which again, we didn't have any zoning districts that allowed them by right before the UDO. We also hope to increase missing middle housing with accessory dwelling units. Again, those were not allowed by right in any zoning district except downtown with a special exception. So hoping to help some of our older folks age in community and open up investment opportunities for our residents. Housing starts have continued to be strong. We've averaged over a thousand housing starts per year. I mean, sometimes that's closer to the five or six hundred range, but we've had upwards of twelve hundred. So again, over that five-year period, we've averaged a little over a thousand. We've had nine new multifamily projects with over sixteen hundred units. I will say that's a boom. We don't necessarily expect that trend to continue, but it was kind of making up for a product that the city didn't have before. And we have seen an increase of homeownership. In terms of housing value, I'm sure you all know that housing values all over the upstate are increasing. So we, of course, have seen that, and we've even seen it greater than the greater Greenville metro area. Most of our cost-burdened residents are either renters or homeowners under the age of thirty-five. And then we are seeing an emerging build-to-rent model. The Leo Jamestown community is one, and then we've had a couple of single-family development.